So welcome to this fourth session on God's empowering presence, the Holy Spirit. And tonight, we will be looking at the first part of spiritual gifts. We'll be looking at some biblical principles about the gifts, how they function within the life of the church. Next week, we will look specifically at gifts and try to enumerate some of them, probably not all of them, but some of them, so we can get a better understanding. And with hope you'll feel better about the church and all the promises that the Spirit has for us. So, many, many things I'm going to tell you tonight comes from this little book, The Gifts of the Spirit by Kenneth Cane Kinghorn. He was a professor at Asbury Seminary for most of his career. I got to sit in on numerous seminars with him when I would go to the Asbury Ministers Conference through the 90s and early 2000s and so forth. He's, I'm not sure if he's still alive or not. I should have checked that before I got here, but remarkable professor. This book is written for laypeople, so it is very accessible. So you could pick this book up and read it very easily and feel blessed by it. Some of the books I used, you wouldn't like. They're pretty technical and a lot of Greek and so forth, so they're not as accessible. But this one is accessible and I really like it, okay? So Kenneth Kinghorn says that the Christian community, traditionally concerned with spiritual fruits, which we talked about last week, love, peace, joy, patience, kindness, all of those. In fact, someone gave me a list. Here they are. Love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. All right, which I really need the last one a lot, but anyway. Don't we all? So, he says that traditionally we've been concerned with spiritual fruits, the formation of Christian character by the Holy Spirit. And that is a right emphasis, okay? Because you can have every spiritual gift under the sun, and if you don't have love, it's like nothing, isn't it? Noisy gong, clanging cymbal. So, but in recent years, in the last perhaps 20 years or so, in the United Methodist Church and many mainline denominations, there has become more interest in the spiritual gifts. So I'm just curious, has Shiloh had teachings on the spiritual gifts before in recent memory? Sometime? All right, so anyway, let's go on with it though. So, let's remember, it is the nature of God to give. And that's the very essence of gifts, God likes to give, okay? To give presence, salvation, to form us in Christ, to give us the wholeness, sanctification, which I talked about last week, and to empower us with the Holy Spirit to do the work of the ministry that God gives the church to do. It's the nature of God to give. God pours God's self out. We see that in Jesus, He gave Himself at every turn, didn't He? Just now, once in a while, He got a way to rest because He was human and would get depleted. But it was always to rest up in God's presence and then to be ready to go out into ministry again. So Jesus is our example, pours Himself out for others. And that's what we're to do, and it's the very nature of God to do. There are problems with spiritual gifts though. And many places in the New Testament, they are dealing with problems in the church. And it's out of those problems that the letters of Paul were written to answer the problems, to try to bring the truth to bear upon those problems. And spiritual gifts is no different. One church particularly was hung up on certain spiritual gifts. Can any of you think what it was? Which church? Corinth, Corinth. And so the church at Corinth, especially the first letter that we call First Corinthians, there was probably a missing letter before that one, but anyway, they had problems and so Paul addressed these things. Now, why do we have problems today? Well, first of all, traditions get passed on down. And traditions out of the church, some of the great thinkers of the church, where sometimes, even though they enlarged our understanding of the Christian faith and were very helpful, sometimes on spiritual gifts, they flunked the test. All right? So, an example, Thomas Aquinas, who wrote a long systematic theology, tried to write about every doctrine he could think of. And he lived in the 13th century, from 1225 to 1274, which was a rather dark time in the history of the church. But he used his critical thinking to bring many truths to help us out. But unfortunately, he said, "The gifts of the Spirit are the exact same thing as the fruits of the Spirit." And he left it at that, and everybody believed him, or not everybody, but you get the drift. And so he equated gifts to fruits, but we know that they're not the same. Fruit's a total different word than gift, and they're treated differently in the Scriptures, but that's what he said, okay? Martin Luther, who is the head of the Protestant Reformation, which founded the Lutheran Church, was a very erudite thinker, priest, a scholar. And yet, he said that nearly everything is a gift of the Spirit. In fact, in his list, he said planting a field is a gift of the Spirit. Birthing a baby is a gift of the Spirit. I might agree with that one. You get my drift though? He was basically saying just about anything is a gift of the Spirit. When anything's a gift of the Spirit, then it's just watered down, isn't it? So that, John Calvin, he's the one that was responsible for cessationist thinking, which is this, he said, "All of the gifts died out with the death of the last apostle." All right, so once the last apostle died, whichever one it was, I don't know which, then he said, "All the gifts ceased." They were just for the people who followed Jesus around. And then Paul gets thrown in there too. But after that, they all cease. And so he says, "They were genuine spiritual gifts, but they're not for today." And so you can see that if you believe that, it will form certain ways of how the church functions and what we expect and so forth. So all of these things were out of tradition. John Wesley, the United Methodist founder, he founded the English side of our church. He never intended to found another church, but the revival swept England and so many people got converted. And when they went to the Anglican Church, they were not sophisticated enough for the Anglican Church and they were driven out. And so he ended up founding a new church, almost by necessity. He had to do something with all these converts. And he probably had the spiritual gift of leadership or administration or something like that because he was a thoroughly organized guy. And he organized everything that he could touch. And so he got people into groups and formed them. There were groups for people who wanted to just inquire about the Christian faith. Then groups for those who were brand new to the Christian faith. Then people who were practicing the spiritual disciplines regularly together and were in the sanctification process, he would bring them into other groups. And eventually, we got a church. So Wesley said that indeed, there must be extraordinary gifts of the Spirit because during these revivals that he had in England, all kinds of miracles were happening. So people would get converted, people would get healed, people would fall down under the power of the Spirit. And all these extravagant things were happening, supernatural things. So he said, "There must be gifts of the Spirit." And he would go to the Scriptures and teach a little bit about them, but not a whole lot. And so anyway, so he was open to it and so forth. Out of that Wesleyan movement came the holiness movement, which tried to bring people into a richer righteousness by the practice of disciplines. But unfortunately, the holiness movement sometimes got absconded into legalism and rigid doctrine. And so some of the promise of that movement sort of waned. And then there was the Pentecostal movement that happened in, really, a lot of people say it happened in our country in around 1902. And they took the outpouring of the Spirit, but they limited the spiritual gifts to just nine, okay? And they got them all out of First Corinthians 12. They ignored everything else. And then they said tongues is the initiatory gift to all the rest. So you got to get tongues first, and then when you get that, you can have the rest or some of the rest. And that's how they taught and so forth. It was a very powerful movement, moved well into the 60s and so forth, still going on today. But Pentecostalism has even seen a decline in their membership and so forth. So it's just interesting how these traditions go. So tradition, lots of good things, lots of things that cause us some difficulty. So does this make sense? All right, I'm sure there are a lot more traditions than what I just said, but there's a few. Ignorance, ignorance plagues everything, doesn't it? If you don't know about something, then how can you embrace it? How can you live into it? How can you be open to it? So if there's no teaching or emphasis about these things at all, then you just don't even know. It's almost like it's a whole foreign territory to you. And there's a lot of ignorance about the Holy Spirit. So I'll talk a little bit more about that later, okay? But there's ignorance, there is subjectivism. Now this means, all right, here's my experience of the Spirit. Therefore, it must be your experience of the Spirit. And it must be exactly the same. And the trouble with that, I think the Spirit's a whole lot more creative and full of diversity than that. I tell this story to all the new members classes. So if you've heard it before, this is just an apocryphal story. But a guy's walking along in a field. And he trips and falls headfirst into an abandoned well. All right, so down he goes headfirst into this well. The well narrows and catches him gradually. And he's alive down there, but he can't get out. So his feet are up in the air and he's upside down. He's not a very religious person, but in a situation like that, you begin to pray. And so this is a made up story, okay? It's not true. But anyway, anyway, he prays, "Oh God, if you get me out of here, I'll serve you the rest of my life." All right? Somebody hears him praying as they're walking through the field. And they look down and they see his ankles, they happen to have a rope. And they take the rope and lasso his feet and pull him out. And sure enough, he's wonderfully converted and decides to follow Jesus. And so he's going to serve God the rest of his life. So he leads people out to the well and pushes them in it. Because he figures, "That's the way I was converted, it's got to be the same way for everybody else." You get my drift? Yeah, so our experience can't be translated to everyone else. We all have unique experiences with God. Yes, there's some general trends. But no, we have to watch subjectivism. You can even see this in the Scriptures sometimes, where something will happen and they want it to happen again the same way. But anyway, and then misuse of the gifts. Now here is something that we must understand about spiritual gifts. And hear this clearly, they are gifts. Therefore, you do not earn them, nor can you attain them. They are not a reward for spiritual maturity. Otherwise, if they were, they would not be
Gifts.
Gifts. Now that puts God in a bit of a pickle in my mind. It guards from pride, okay, because they're gifts. Nobody can say, "Well, I've arrived now, I've got this spiritual gift, aren't I special?" It's not that, right? They're gifts. Sometimes, some of the most immature spiritual people get gifts. And then they start misusing them. This is why the church exists. The church in its maturity must come around even its immature members and help them out. Does this make sense? So let's suppose somebody becomes a new Christian and they get a spiritual gift. I don't know, let's say they get teaching, but they haven't studied much yet. And they start teaching, they teach some things right, but guess what? They come and teach some things wrong. What must the church do? Come around that person, say, "Ah, no, no, that's not quite right." Teach them, right? Help them to understand more and so forth, so they can grow into their gift. Does that make sense? We also see a lot of misuse of gifts in our culture. You get these evangelists who have enormous healing rallies, where they ask for lots of money, okay? And they want people to be healed, and sometimes they are, but sometimes they fake it. It's been proven, okay? That's called what? A misuse of the gifts. You see, the gifts are not ours to completely control. If you have a gift of healing, it doesn't mean every person you pray for is going to be healed. Otherwise, the hospitals would be empty, all right? Even Jesus had gifts of healing, didn't He? In fact, I think He had all the gifts, all right, but did He heal everybody? No, in fact, He was limited to one place at a time. He couldn't even get to everybody. And then sometimes people resisted. And He couldn't even do any good, great work in certain cities. In fact, one time, He got a little angry and He said, "No, if the miracles had been done in this city as were done in your city, everyone would have repented and received." But of course, they didn't, did they? So gifts can be misused and they can be resisted, all right? Spiritual gifts, as I mentioned, are not spiritual fruit, we've covered that. Also, they are not human talent. All right, so sometimes this happens. Someone is a really good school teacher, okay? Excellent school teacher. And so what's the church do? We ask that person to teach Sunday School, okay? We give them a good curriculum and so forth, and we think it all ought to go well. And it's indeed, maybe that teacher has a wonderful command on the classroom. But if she doesn't have any spiritual gifts running in this arena, then it could be that she's really not able, or he, to pass on spiritual truth. Do you see the difference there? I'm not throwing stones at school teachers, please. I love school teachers. But I'm just saying, sometimes our natural talents do not always transfer into spiritual gifts. This is really important. You can have a scholarly pastor, and they have all the head knowledge, they can study. And yet, they're as dry as dust when it comes to trying to get across a truth of God. Why? Because they have no gift for it. Does that make sense? They have absolute, they might have it up here in the head, but they can't apply it in the realm of experience, in the realm of how the Holy Spirit wants to use them. So that's the way it goes. There are lots of pastors who don't have the spiritual gifts for ministry. Or it goes like this, they have a wonderful gift for pastoral care. And yet, they're pigeonholed to do something else. And so maybe they're becoming an administrator because they have natural talent for that. But their true gift is what? Pastoral care. They should not be administering, they should be in pastoral care. So we have to know ourselves and what gifts we may have. So gifts are not human talent. The church cannot be built on human talent. Sometimes I see my own United Methodist Church make mistakes like this. They have a certain idea of what a talented pastor ought to look like. And it's someone who is young and vivacious and has a winsome outgoing personality and has their shirt out. And they think that that does it. That doesn't do it, okay? You can be hip, cool, all right? You can look the pot and it all fall apart, all right? So this is really important. We have to know ourselves and what are our spiritual gifts? What is the proper assessment of our true abilities within the church? So, you know, I can administrate, but that's not my gift, okay? I work really hard at it because I'm no good at it. I work hard, hard at it, takes more time than it should. Why? Because it's not my gift, all right? I do have other gifts though, okay? I do. I have, I think, the gift of teaching. That has been said by most people as my principal spiritual gift. So that gift flows through many different avenues. But I do the other stuff, but I'm not always as good at that. All right, now this next one. Spiritual gifts are not an irresistible power. This scares so many people in the church that it blocks them off from saying that it blocks them off from saying yes to the Spirit. And it goes something like this. Here it is. Well, at Pentecost, the Holy Spirit came upon all those people, and they spoke in other tongues, and they just blurted it all out. And then, the people outside were converted because they blurted it all out. It was just a mess, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to have the Holy Spirit and all of a sudden be going, "Boo, boo, boo." Okay? I just do not want to do that. Now, I got to tell you, it's not the way it works, okay? All those people there, their human will was not usurped by the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit never does that. You hear that? The Holy Spirit will not usurp your will. Now, it behooves us, though, to cooperate with the Holy Spirit and to be open to what the Spirit has for us. But the Spirit never forces anyone to speak or sing in tongues. You have to be open to that and be willing, and your voice cooperates with the Spirit. It will not usurp it. Does that make sense? This is terribly important because this blocks many people from being open to what the Spirit wants to do. And so, they get horribly scared. And they think, "Well, what if I'm called to preach tomorrow? I've never preached before. Now, I get the gift of prophecy, and I got to start preaching. I don't want to preach." And so, they say, "No." Or, what if the Spirit says, "You got to be a missionary." And then, they're thinking, "I don't want to be a missionary. I am not going to Africa. I am not going to Africa." All right? I'd like to hear. Do you get my drift? This is not how the Spirit operates, at all. Believe me, if you're called to go to Africa, there's some part of you that wants to go to Africa. It is in the deep fabric of who you are. Does that make sense? It would energize you to go to Africa, okay? If you're called to be a pastor, believe me, there's something in there that wants that. It fits with who you are as a child of God. Now, I may not fit everything, though, because it didn't fit me in every way. But you get my drift, right? Okay. It is not an irresistible power, all right? Any questions about that? Did I make that clear? Like I said, I do have the gift of redundancy. So, there are two extremes of how people deal with the Holy Spirit. Now, these two words are made-up words, okay? They don't exist in the English language. Charis is the Greek word that means gift. A spiritual gift is charismata, okay? Which we get the word charismatic from, okay? Charismatic is sometimes used for the richness of the Spirit with all the spiritual gifts, but sometimes, it's used for people who are just outgoing and win you over. But in the original language of the Greek in our New Testament, charis means gift. What's phobia mean? Fear. So, one of the extreme attitudes is charisphobia, which means what? You fear anything that's not in the church bulletin. Do you get my drift? Anything that isn't nailed down, that you can't touch and feel and quantify in this space-time-matter box. Anything that strikes of the supernatural is feared, all right? Then, there's charismania. What's mania?
Crazy.
It's excessive stuff, isn't it? It's too excess, isn't it? And so, a mania is, you know, you're ramped up. And charismania happens to some people. So, they begin to spiritualize absolutely everything, okay?
Only rollers.
That's right, could be. They are ready to roll. So, I had years and years ago, okay, this is a long time ago, when I was in Proctorville, I had a district youth gathering there. And there were probably 100 kids at our church, which is way too many for the church that I was part of. But you can imagine, they're all crammed in there. And then, I walked through the hall, and there is a young man down on the ground, writhing back and forth like this. And a girl has her hands on his head, and she is trying to cast a demon out of him, okay? Now, all right. God prepared me for that moment, okay? I had, I don't know how I can describe this, but I actually had a visit from the Spirit, I could say, where this scene was in my mind. And I saw myself say to the young man, "You are faking this. Sit up." All right? So, this came in my prayer life the day before this event. I didn't know what to make about it, but I did when I rounded that corner. So, I walked up with all the confidence in the world, right? Even though that's not a situation I normally face. I walked right up to him. He's writhing back and forth. She is all over him. I think he was enjoying that. But anyway, I said to him, well, first, I said to the girl, "What's his name?" And she told me, so I used his name and I said, "Young man, sit up. You are faking this." Whereupon, he immediately sat up and said, "I'm sorry." Okay? All right? There's charismania out there. So, some people want to cast the devil out of anything that wiggles, okay? All right? Do you get what I'm saying? Another time, to show you how dangerous this is, I was at the Lima District Youth Institute, large gathering. I don't think they have it anymore, but it was that annual conference. And a girl in our youth group was there, and this was her first outing after her brother had been killed. And he was, how old was he? Nineteen, all right? So, here is this 14, 15-year-old girl. And it's the first time she's ventured out to go to an event after her brother died. And there was a worship service, and at the end of the worship service, they sang Amazing Grace. And she began to wail and weep uncontrollably. Because guess how they closed her brother's service? With Amazing Grace. There were a couple of other youth leaders that suffer from charismania. They immediately decided this girl had a demon and were going to cast the demon out of her, and they're praying like mad over her. And somebody comes to me and says, "You won't believe what's happening to her." And so, I rush over and I break it up. And I said, "You guys, why'd you do that?" And they gave their reasons, that, you know, demons scream at Amazing Grace and all that. And I said, "You got it all wrong." And I told them why. Now, that's just what happens. And these are well-meaning Christians, okay? But they got it wrong. They're getting their zeal for spiritual gifts ahead of their true giftedness. They don't know what they're doing. They simply don't know what they're doing. And when that happens, a lot of bad things can happen in the church. So, does that make sense? Charisphobia? Charismania? Okay? Either extreme is really not helpful. Both quench the spirit. They both quench the spirit. All right? So, what is a spiritual gift? It is a divine supernatural ability given by God to enable Christians to serve and to minister, right? That's what it is. That's what they are. It's a gift. It's supernatural. You can't just study it and learn your way into a spiritual gift, all right? It's given by God, but it's not for you. If you have a spiritual gift, who is it for? Others. It's for the church. It's not, my gift of teaching is not for me. It's not to satisfy my urge to study. It is for the body of Christ. So, we are to share our gifts, yes, but they're under the direction of the Holy Spirit. This is so important, okay? So, this is divine. Once again, it is a grace gift. It cannot be earned. All right? It is designed by God, okay? And designated by God. So, you can pray all you want to, to have a certain spiritual gift. You can pray from now to the end of your life. And if God doesn't want you to have that gift, guess what? You don't get it. It is the Holy Spirit who designates who gets the gift. God the Father, with Jesus the Son decides. It is not you who decides, all right? This is really important. So, I mean, I'd love to have the gift of healing. I have seen people healed through ministry where I prayed for them before, but I don't really think I have that gift, okay? But I'm called to pray for people, just like you are, right? But it's not a gift, I would say, I have. All right? Gifts are not for just select few people in the church, okay? Now, if you were in the Old Testament, we could argue that that's true. But not in the New Testament. In the New Testament, the Holy Spirit falls on the church, falls on everybody, right? And it says that the prophecy of Joel was completed, or Yoel, if you want to try to say it in Hebrew. And, but anyway, it's the idea that it doesn't matter your status, your gender, your age. You can receive the Holy Spirit and be gifted. It is for everyone to have a spiritual gift. I would like to think that everyone, if they're open to this and would seek and just be open, ask God to fill them with the Spirit, that everybody at least gets one. Now, you may get it right at conversion, and you may know then, "Oh, I'm different, and this is how I'm different." And you begin to think differently and act differently, and all of a sudden, you have the operation of a gift, okay? But for some, you know, it can be later. But I don't know when it might be, but everybody's got, has access to at least one, all right? I think I'm safe to say that because the Scripture says that, "And to each one is given a gift," okay? All right. It's for ministry, though. It is never to exalt people. Gifts should humble us. How'd that happen? It humbles us, all right? Because God humbles us. The true presence of God is humbling. That's why sometimes we bow, right? It's why they're to be used in obedience to God's will. People, again, make mistakes, okay? Even sometimes, they make mistakes in their well-meaning, and it's right, but they just need a bit more wisdom. So, you remember the woman who I said asked to be filled with the Spirit, and it came upon her, and afterwards, she could discern people's spirits? And she could tune into someone and get a little movie about them and learn things about them, impressions about them, and all the rest? But then, at first, she went around and told just nearly anybody. But that was a mistake because some people aren't ready or open. So, she learned, she had to hold on to that stuff until she could establish relationships with people and then discern if they were ever ready to hear those kinds of things. Does that make sense? So, she was well-meaning, never said anything that was wrong, but you got to grow in maturity with all this. So, there we go. A gift like that is A gift like that is really helpful in discernment of what, you know, you might wanna do. It's very helpful for people to realize where they're at emotionally, so they can, you know, be transformed and so forth. Everything's energized by the Spirit. That's why we call it Gifts of the Spirit. Alright? And eventually, even though this is first and foremost for the church, to help the church to minister, the church doesn't exist for ourselves, does it? We exist for others. And so eventually, God wants to do what? Bring wholeness to all creation. Alright? There's value in knowing your spiritual gifts. They can help determine your calling, your vocation. Okay? It can mobilize the church for mission. It assists in setting priorities for study and growth and ministry. Can give each person a sense of self-acceptance. Alright? And it can enable us to receive the gift ministries of others. If we receive our own gifts, we can receive the gifts of others. To discover your gifts, for a while, it was real trendy to give you a survey. And you just checked off a lot of boxes, but they didn't work. And the reason they don't work is because it's all built on experience. And what if you have a gift and you don't know you got it? Then it's not gonna show up on a survey, is it? So surveys maybe can help show trends, but they're not real accurate sometimes. But be open to God, ask to be filled with the Spirit, and then examine your desires. What are your desires? So, you know, after I was converted, one of my desires was to know the truths that were in the Bible. Read my Bible straight through after I was converted, couldn't get enough of it. I just wanted to know truth and have it be balanced. I also, I have this tendency, I want to explode myths about the Scriptures. Things that people believe, but they're wrong. It just gets me excited to bear truth on these things, okay? And all of that helped what? To propel me into calling, but also gave me nudges that maybe I have a spiritual gift of teaching. Examine your desires for service. So, I was converted at sixteen, and my favorite thing to do in the world was to go to youth group.
To do what?
Go to youth group. Youth fellowship. I loved it. It was my family that I needed beyond my family. And my pastor noticed that I loved it so much that he started giving me little things to do. Do this devotion. Hey, could you read this chapter and maybe say a few things about it? And it just captured me. I wanted to do that. Now, I was studying to be a dentist, but I hated it. I could do it, but I hated it. But studying the Scriptures energized me. And that's what happens with spiritual gifts. They energize you. I can be dog tired and get up to teach, and I am ready. Okay? And I say none of this to exalt myself or anything. What I'm saying is if you have a spiritual gift, it renews you. It usually doesn't deplete you. So, there are people who might have a spiritual gift of helps, where they just love to help the church do something for someone else. And so at a dinner, they are all about it. They love every moment of it. Planning it, putting it together, greeting people, enabling others to get involved. They're helping and helping and helping. Why? Because they can't help themselves. It is a spiritual gift. Now, I can do that too, but I am dead by the end of it. I don't wanna do it anymore. It takes it out of me. Do you understand what I'm saying? It depletes me, whereas with someone else, it energizes them. Plus, I'm no good at it. Don't have me be in charge of your dinner. It will be a disaster. So what energizes you? What energizes you? Identify needs in the church. So some people have the gift of evangelism. Now, there is a spiritual gift of evangelism, as well as that we're all called to witness, okay? But some people have a spiritual gift of it. They just can put the gospel in a form that other people embrace, and they get converted. And that's a wonderful gift. And so if you ask them what needs they see in the church, they'll tell you. People need Jesus. And they are out to get people converted. That's the need they see, okay? Other people, you ask them, what's the need in the church? For people to care about each other. Because we have too many people that are lonely. And so they have different gifts, right? And so sometimes the needs we see. Obey God's Word and then listen to other Christians. So, maybe ninety percent of the time, people are right that they might have a certain spiritual gift, but sometimes they're wrong. And the church has to tell them. Listen to other Christians. I remember there was one young man in our youth group who wanted to be a preacher. And I just had to tell him, I don't think this is your gift. I just, I just don't think you'll be happy in this. Sometimes people mistake the Christian life for being something they wanna grow in, as to be equivalent to a calling to minister professionally or something. They're not the same. So, listen to other Christians. And every now and then, they may identify something in you that you didn't know you had. I mean, the other day in this church, I said, I think you have the spiritual gift of encouragement. Because this person is an encourager. And when they encourage someone else, it's like God's encouraging you. Does that make sense? It's not just, oh, I'm saying flattering words. It's almost like God is encouraging. That's a spiritual gift. You can't drum that up. You can be a natural encourager, but the spiritual gift of encouragement is tapped with the presence of the Spirit. You know, God's spoken to you. Well, maybe we better stop here, we've gone a long way, let's see. Well, I'll do this one. Spiritual gifts flow out of our union with Christ. Spiritual gifts exalt Christ, because that's the job of the Holy Spirit, is to exalt the living Jesus. They help others to grow. Also, spiritual gifts, when they're operating correctly, bring unity in the body of Christ. They, we should be balanced with our understanding of gifts. And they're always to function in love. There is an unselfish quality about it. There is, you want the best for others. It draws you out. It's all about the divine love. Okay? Alright, so that's about as far as we go. We'll begin next week with talking about the spiritual gifts and defining them a little more. Although I wanna tell you, and I'll start here next week, there is no systematic listing of the spiritual gifts in the Bible. Alright? There just isn't. And so, and sometimes they're called one thing one place and another another place, and it's very difficult to get it all straight. But we'll have fun with it next week, okay? Alright, so, I'm gonna go to the last prayer. And so let's stand for this. Together, come, Holy Spirit, fill my heart with your holy gifts. Let my weakness be penetrated with your strength this very day, that I may fulfill your calling upon my life. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you so much for being with me and with each other. And next week's our last one.